Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the Lawrence City Council Committee on the Whole. Today is Thursday, May 4th. In attendance this evening for the City Council is Counselor David Abdu, Counselor Brian DePania, Counselor Podesta Maldonado, and Counselor Myra Ortiz. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselors, for being present here this evening. There's a lot on the agenda. I've been asked, and I will honor one item, I'll put it before the vote. I would like to, first of all, is there a motion to accept the Committee on the Whole minutes from January 30th? Motion made.
Second.
Second in all, favor say aye. You guys have it. Is there a motion to take off the agenda? 433-16, this is the disability one, right? Armando? Okay. So, a motion to take document 433-16 off the table items?
So who?
Motion made, and second in all, favor say aye.
Aye.
You guys have it. Counselors, this was a home rule petition looking for, as I understand it, some, I'm not sure if the right word is "benefit," but in a changing of the law to allow a firefighter to receive special, I think it's special disability, I'm going to use the word "benefit," I could be wrong on that, I don't want to, but this is a home rule petition, we would have to support it here before council, and it would have to go before the state legislature if it's signed off by the mayor. Is there, I'll just open it up, is there anyone here to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Counselors. I'm basically just here to support the Retirement Board in its memo. I think the Retirement Board did send a memo from their attorney, Michael Sacco, and I'd like to just, Michael's here tonight, he can explain exactly what this issue is all about and why we're kind of opposed to this special legislation. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Michael Sacco, the attorney for the Retirement Board.
Please do. Thank you, Mr. Iannello.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for hearing us out of order, appreciate that. If I may just briefly give you some background, and just for the record, my name is Michael Sacco, I am the Lawrence Retirement Board Attorney. I've had the pleasure of representing the Board for about 25 years now. We're here, to be clear, I want to preface what I say by, I think the two themes of what I'm about to say would be price and perspective. In terms of the price, as Mr. Iannello mentioned, there was a letter that was provided to the council and an actuarial study report done by the Board's actuary, which, in essence, indicates that the unfunded liability for the pension system would increase by a million dollars by granting this one piece of legislation, obviously a home rule petition, which, as Ms. Diddleplant said, has to go past this committee and then to the full committee before being forwarded to the legislature. If I can, just briefly, the pension system has a built-in mechanism, if you will, for disability retirements, and for those individuals who are injured in the line of duty and permanently disabled, they are entitled to certain statutory benefits, and Mr. Armando is currently receiving that benefit of an accidental disability, which is, by statute, 72% of his salary, tax-free for the rest of his life. Now, I can't speak to you about what the disability is because of privacy considerations and the law doesn't allow me to, but what he is seeking, or what this home rule petition is seeking, is to, in essence, elevate his benefit above the other 89 individuals who are currently also receiving accidental disability benefits, and to a level that would be paid to a widow if her husband had been killed in the line of duty. You may remember, a few months ago, when this matter was first scheduled, a firefighter by the name of Joe Toscano in Watertown was killed in a fire, and it was a fairly publicized tragedy. He left a widow and four children. She's going to receive the same benefit that you're being asked to approve for Mr. Armando. So, that's the perspective piece of this. In addition to what this bill proposes, elevating his retirement benefit from 72% to 100%, and then, upon his death, for any reason, his widow would continue to receive 100% of the allowance. Under the current structure, if he were to pass as a result of the same reason for which he retired, then his widow would continue to receive the 72% that he's currently receiving. So, not only is this a significant immediate increase to the city's unfunded liability, it potentially opens up the floodgates, if you will, for any other individual who's retired for an accidental disability to come before you and say, "What about me?" So, again, I'm constrained from talking about what the particular issue is related to the disability, but we had a case here in Lawrence, I think about seven years ago, of a young firefighter who died as a result of his illness, leaving four young children, and his widow received 72% of his benefit, or his last salary, I should say. So, again, some perspective in terms of what you're being asked to do, you're being asked to elevate an individual's retirement allowance not only to 100%, but also, normally, a disability retiree has earnings limitations, they can only earn so much after they've retired. This bill eliminates any earnings limitations for this individual, and every disability retiree in the state is subject to reexamination every two years, you're being asked to waive that provision as well. So, this is really quite remarkable in what is being asked of you. The Retirement Board, we really don't take a position on the bill, because ultimately it's your pocketbook. If the City Council believes that this is an appropriate expenditure of funds, it all comes back to you in your annual appropriation, and you'll be paying for that. I think what we want to do tonight, and what I've hoped, tried to do, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, is to simply put it in perspective in terms of all the other disability retirees that the City of Lawrence currently has, and to also point out that what Mr. Armando has, which the firefighter who passed in Watertown doesn't have, is his life, and he's being paid consistent with the statute, and we think that the statute should be respected. Thank you. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
We may come back to you. Is there anybody else who wishes speaking on this matter? Any questions by the committee members?
I do.
Mr. Maldonado?
The 72% disability retirement, is that a state mandated?
Yes, the state law, Chapter 32, which is the retirement statute and governs all of public employees in the Commonwealth, sets forth that when an individual is injured in the line of duty and becomes permanently disabled, that individual is entitled to 72% of his last year's pay, or the pay he was receiving when he was injured, for the rest of his life.
So, that applies to everyone across the state level?
Yes. Any public employee, whether you're a DPW worker, or a teacher, or cafeteria worker, police, or fire, the level of benefits are the same. There are some additional enhanced benefits for public safety for being killed in the line of duty, if that were to occur, but otherwise, the accidental disability benefit that Mr. Armando is currently receiving is the same benefit that's available to any public employee across the state.
You mentioned that there is a bill that is trying to change that?
The, I'm referring to-
This is the home rule petition.
The home rule petition, yes.
So, if we submit a home rule petition, we'll be changing it specifically for one individual?
That's right.
Or is that going to affect every other individual that is already retired in the city on disability?
It will only affect this one individual.
How many other people do we have that are retired on disability in the city?
Eighty-nine, I believe, is the number. Eighty-nine people that are similarly situated in terms of receiving an accidental disability retirement allowance.
If we do it for one individual, what is going to stop those 89 individuals from suing the city and getting to qualified under the same conditions?
Well, I think the potential is that those individuals, or any one of those individuals, could come in next week with the same bill and ask you, why not approve it for him or her, since you just approved it for Mr. Armando? So, it won't directly impact them. You certainly have the discretion to do this, I would just ask that you consider the ramifications of doing it.
That's what I'm thinking of. You're an attorney.
Yes, I am.
I mean, my, I'm not an attorney, but my feeling is that the chances are that if we do it for one person, that another 89 or 88 will file in court to be awarded the same benefits, and that they will be successful in court. I mean, that's my, again, I'm not an attorney, but-
I certainly am not in a position to give you legal advice. I would say that the way the home rule petition statute works, and it does only affect an individual, I don't know that that would give rise to any other claims, other than individuals coming before this esteemed body and asking to have the same thing done for him or her that you just are contemplating for this case.
Has any other city or towns tried to submit a home rule petition to raise that 72% to 100%?
It has happened. I'm aware of two cases. I can tell you about one case very briefly. A firefighter in the town of Hull was responding to a fire in a burning garage. Unbeknownst to the firefighters, the individual who owned the garage was storing ammunition in the garage. One of the bullets heated up and went off and lodged in the firefighter's spine and became a quadriplegic. In that particular case, given the traumatic circumstances and the impact on him and his young family, a home rule petition was put in place for that individual to award him 100%. He was not going to be able to work, he was obviously fairly devastated and debilitated because of the injury. That was the one case that I was mostly involved with when I represented, and I still represent the Hull Retirement Board when they put that through, and that had a lot of support because of, obviously, the extensive injuries that were incurred as a result.
Under the current 72%, is the surviving spouse able to continue receiving that 72%?
Only if the member dies as a result of the same injury for which he retired.
Okay, okay, only, okay.
And that's only if that. If an accidental disability retiree dies for a reason unrelated to his employment, it depends on what retirement option was selected, but the best available benefit to the spouse would be two-thirds of the benefit that was being paid to the individual.
Under this home rule petition, the surviving spouse is entitled to 100%, regardless of whether the person died from those injuries, or whatever may cause, may have been caused-
That's right.
Or only, under the same conditions, or-
No, anything.
No conditions.
No conditions.
Okay, okay, no more questions.
Any other questions or comments from the members of the committee? I'll remind the committee, at this point, I will entertain a motion. Motions could either be sent up with a favorable recommendation, an unfavorable recommendation, or send it without a recommendation, of course, we can always table. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send this to the full council without a recommendation.
With no recommendation? Motion's been made?
I second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this matter? Here and now, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. This matter is now going to the full City Council, which is meeting in two weeks, I believe that would be the 16th, if it's Tuesday. So, this matter will be addressed at that point. Thank you very much, Attorney, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for members of the team of the Retirement Board for showing up as well. Is there any business on the City Council agenda that any member would like to take off the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, document 426-16, I make the motion to take it out of table matters.
Motion's been made to take document 426-16. Review of police arrest of Lawrence firefighter shooting incident on December 6th, September 6th, 2016, has been taken off the table and has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's know, the ayes have it. Mr. Maldonado, you have the floor.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I think that in order to discuss this matter, we may have to go, I think it is essential to go into executive session, because they are very sensitive matters that, where the question of disciplinary action may be required, and I would like to make a motion that we go into a secondary session.
Mr. Maldonado, if you are anticipating to go into executive session, which is certainly your right, you would need to provide a reason for going into executive session, and the format, I believe, has been provided to you this evening to help you, if you want to go through that.
Yes, let me see, let me see what would be the best.
Mr. Maldonado, I would call to your attention this document, which might be helpful to you. Mr. Maldonado?
I'm sorry?
This one might be helpful to you, it's in your packet.
I don't, is it in that package? I don't think I have, I don't have it.
And, Mr. Maldonado, would there be an opportunity to, before you make the motion and go into executive session, to have as candid a conversation as we can in public before entertaining that motion?
Okay, then, yeah, let me, let me explain why, why I feel that a secondary session will be required, but let me explain the situation. A while back, the police responded, on September 6th, the police responded to, to an incident where a firefighter shot himself, and it is my understanding that the wife was in danger, and the police was called to assist. When the police arrived, they found that a firefighter had injured himself, had shot The police found several weapons in the house of the firefighter, in which a sort of shotgun was also part of the arsenal. For some reason, which I think that's a reason for a secondary session, the sort of shotgun, which requires, by state law, a minimum of one-year sentence in jail, was kept off the report, and I believe it was done intentionally, and the firefighter was not charged with possession of an illegal weapon. I believe that it was evidence that it was not included in the report, and it is also my understanding that the Attorney General forced the police department to include that in the report, which was kept out intentionally, again, and to charge the firefighter with the possession of an illegal weapon. It is also my understanding that some negotiations were held with the district attorney where the charges for the sort of shotgun was dropped. And obviously, to me and to the people, to the citizens of Lawrence, it is important to know why evidence of a crime was hidden and was kept from a report, and why people were protected against prosecution of a sort of shotgun, and why the charges were dropped. It is my understanding that there was an opinion given by the state as to the fact that the sort of shotgun was illegal, and again, for some reason, for, in my opinion, there has been, there is a cover-up to protect individuals, and I need to know why. I believe the citizens of Lawrence needs an answer. Who was responsible for telling the officer to exclude the report of the sort of shotgun to keep it off the report? Who was responsible for that? I mean, I know, I know the name of the person, but I don't want to mention it, obviously, but who authorized that individual to authorize the police officer to keep this sort of shotgun off the record? And why did the Attorney General have to get involved in forcing the police department to include the sort of shotgun and to file charges? Why wasn't the police officer who intentionally excluded an evidence, excluded out of the report, why wasn't that police officer or his lieutenant, why were they not disciplined for hiding evidence of a crime? So, there are a lot of questions, and obviously, if it is going to require disciplinary action, which I believe it should, then it's something that needs to be discussed in a secondary session, so that, because it may include litigation, and who knows, it may include criminal charges.
So, Counsel, thank you, Counsel. Are you, I want to make time to make your discussion. I just want to remind the Counselor that, based on the executive session quick reference guide, there are approximately 10 reasons as to why we should or are willing to go into executive session. Counselor, I would strongly recommend that you find and make the reason as to why, one of these reasons as to why we should be doing so. Because I think that what your discussion that you're providing for is extremely sensitive, extremely sensitive, and what we don't want to do is to impact in any negative way, I don't know the circumstances, the situation, if there's litigation, if there's an investigation, I don't know any of these details, but I don't think any of us want to complicate or impact that in any shape.
I agree with you.
So, it's really sensitive. I know the police chief is here this evening, but I-
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think number one would be the most appropriate.
So, so, number one is the, to discuss the reputation, character, or physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Is that fit?
Yes.
Are you looking to, are you looking to discuss a discipline of dismissal, or complaint, or charge against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual?
Yes.
You are.
Yes.
If you look at the note below that, "The individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session, provided, however, that the notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties. A public body shall hold an open session if the individual involved requests that the session be open. If an executive session is held, such individual shall have the following rights: to be present at such executive session during deliberations which involve that individual; two, to have counsel or representative of his own choosing present and attending for the purpose of advising the individual, and not for the purpose of active participation in the executive session; or three, to speak on his own behalf; or four, to cause an independent record to be created of said executive session by audio recording or transcription at the individual's expense." Are you aware, Mr. Maldonado, of this letter having been sent to whoever it is that you're looking to have a dismissal?
No letter has been sent, so obviously, we cannot discuss individuals, but I believe that we can, we can discuss facts in a secondary session, so that, so that we can determine later on as to whether we should invite individuals.
Mr. Maldonado, I understand. Will you please provide for me the rationale behind which we can go into executive session under the auspices of what you just mentioned?
I'm sorry?
Would you please provide for the committee the rationale, the executive session reason, it's listed here in our sheet, so that we have full confidence that we're doing things lawfully and according to the rules?
Well, if we are going to discuss complaints or charges, then that would apply.
Which one, Mr. Maldonado? I'm sorry?
That would be number one.
The one that we just read?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, that would be, yes, that would be number one, to discuss complaints or charges brought against. And again, the problem, the problem here, Counselors, is that we need to, in order to invite somebody, that we need to discuss the facts and know where we stand. And what I would hate to do is to discuss publicly, even though we can probably discuss with the chief of police who is present, and also the personal director, we can discuss in public without mentioning names, we can discuss the facts and then determine whether we should invite any individuals in a secondary session, so that would be your choice, Mr. Chairman.
So, again, what I was able to read, what the first one was, which is, to go into executive session, we need to go ahead, and there's an individual that we're discussing about discipline, or dismissal, or complaints, or charges.
Mm-hmm.
And if we're doing that, that individual must be, must be invited here. Now, if somebody were to find this out, there's plenty of information here, review of the police arrest of Lawrence firefighter shooting injury incident on September 6th, 2016, it's pretty clear on the public agenda who that possibly, who that probably is.
Yes.
Why? Because I can't imagine there being that many incidents on that date between the firefighter and a police officer.
That is correct.
So, if we're going to go down this road, it's pretty clear that we're talking about an individual, because it's going to be pretty clear that's on the agenda.
That is correct.
And then we're, and we may not mention the name, but it's pretty obvious who we're talking about. talking about. Doesn't take a lot of investigation to figure that out. And so, we have not invited that individual. My concern is that we're going to put ourselves in jeopardy, and I don't think, I don't think any of us want to do that.
Okay. Then probably we should look at it in other ways. I believe that there are current, if Mr. Bonet can correct me, I believe there are currently possible litigation. Am I correct, Mr. Bonet?
Would you like to call Mr. Bonet up?
Yes. Mr. Bonet, could you come over, please?
Good evening. Frank Bonet, 33 Dahmer Street, personal director.
Are there any current litigation against the firemen of the incident that we are talking about?
The process to appeal, to discharge, has not fully been completed, so-
Okay, so-
The individual still has-
So there is current litigation?
Process, yes. Other than that, I think executive session.
Okay.
Anything else would be executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. If you look at, Mr. Chairman, number five, "To investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to discuss the filing of criminal complaints."
So, Mr. Maldonado would like to use number five to investigate charges of criminal misconduct. Has there been any criminal misconduct charges on this? There has been. I got a nod from Mr. Bonet. Or discuss the filing of criminal complaints. Chief, did you want to add anything to this before we? Police Chief Fitzpatrick.
James Fitzpatrick, 90 Lowell Street, police chief. Which, who are we talking about specifically? The firefighter or the investigating officer?
I really don't know. It's not my motion.
In this particular case, in this particular case, I wish, I wish that we had the attorney here so that he can advise us on how to proceed best. But in this particular case, I understand that there were charges brought against the firemen.
Correct.
And also the fact that there were some charges dropped, so there were criminal charges brought against the individual. Is, let me ask you a question straight out. Is the hiding of evidence of a crime, a crime in itself?
If that, yes, it is, but not, and not in this circumstance. The evidence was not hidden. It's, without getting too far afield, if we can get a legal opinion on whether or not this document can be entered into this body, it will support the fact that the object in question was, in fact, put in the report. Initially, charges were not filed, and then subsequently were. And I can expand on that either, whatever you want.
I would, well, I would, there are certain things you might be able to speak here publicly about, and feel free to answer Mr. Maldonado's question if it's a question that you can answer. Obviously, we already discussed about the sensitivities. There may be things in relation to the investigation, things that are still open, things that are going on, in which case, I don't believe you'd want to be able to put that information out in public, and you may demure from responding to those and answering those questions for the sake of our city.
Yes, sir. You know, again, these are pretty serious allegations as to, you know, evidence being intentionally taken out to protect a firefighter. That is not true. The object in question was specifically named. It was amongst 11 weapons that were recovered that evening. Again, it was a chaotic scene where a person had a firearm, had threatened to use it. In a domestic situation, things were developing rather quickly. This individual had released an animal, a large dog, out into the public towards police officers that were around the house. That dog was subsequently shot. Not too long after that, that individual shot himself. Again, it was, first aid needed to be provided by police officers because the scene was not safe. EMS was not allowed into the scene until it was secure. Again, there were two weapons that were available to this individual before he was placed into custody. Another 11 firearms were confiscated. And in the process of putting all of these into evidence, the, and I don't want to get into the too much of the circumstances, but it was publicly put out there that a sort of shotgun was amongst the items. I believe it was an oversight on the investigating officer's part in not initially charging this individual. Those charges were forthcoming in a couple of days once it was realized that that weapon, he had not been charged with it.
Chief, I find it hard to believe that pictures were taken of the weapons.
Objection. I just want to object. So, because there's pending litigation, and that's, I know exactly the question you're going through. Actually, I would definitely ask the man for executive session, because the litigation is going, is going, there may be information that you will ask the chief that can be used by the individual that was discharged from employment-
Okay.
-in order to reverse their termination or even to countersue the city. And I'm not legal, but I follow the case, and I've been in communication with the outside attorneys from Boston, Deutch &amp; Williams. The last thing that occurred in November was that the individual voluntarily withdrew his civil service appeal, which gave us an indication that he's going in another route. And that's as much as I can say right now.
Attorney Bodie, send me a text message that he was going to be available at 8 o'clock. It's going to be five minutes to 8 o'clock. Obviously, we are, we are getting into very sensitive territory-
May I?
-that we need legal advice. We definitely need legal advice on this. If it is, if it is possible, we can send a text message. Attorney Bodie said that he was going to be available by 8 o'clock. If it is possible, we can probably send him a text message that take-
Can we take another topic?
A recess or take another topic?
We certainly have all those options. If you want to go ahead and text Mr. Bodie, you can certainly feel free to do so. If you're willing to relinquish the floor, I think Mr. Abdi, is there something he would like to say or Mr. Abdi? He's texting, he's done.
So, first of all, I think we've said some dangerous things tonight, because I too have opinions, I too read news, and I've spoken to several people regarding this matter. It's brought to my attention. And there, a lot of them, if they were taken at face value, would therefore make some of the statements you've made this evening incorrect. So, I for one would not feel comfortable discussing this publicly or in executive session without advice of counsel, because I truly believe that this firefighter has rights and that this city council is not qualified to take these matters into our own hands. We're a legislative body. We do have oversight of public safety. This is in the court's hands. I believe there's already been a court decision on this, a procedural decision. I feel that we're doing a lot of this based on opinion, and, you know, now it's not only are we making an accusation regarding firefighters, but now we're suggesting that the police are covering things up. And to me, that's all dangerous. That's dangerous language, particularly in the city in which we live right now with the crimes that have occurred, the temperature in the community. I don't know that it's healthy, and I understand things just to be different. So, therefore, without advice of counsel, even before, I would not be one to support executive session, nor would I be comfortable really continuing this conversation at all until we've been given counsel. And even then, I would be of the mind, and I'll close with this, that firefighter should be notified, his counsel should be notified, if indeed this body. We talk a lot about this body, this legislative body, taking reckless actions of courses. I would, I would suggest that this would be one of them if we do it without legal counsel and if we do it without a clear path as to what we plan on doing and why we're doing it within the confines of the executive session as it's laid out in this documentation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to you, but I would not be supporting this motion to go into executive session tonight. I would also note that this, this incident that's reported in the media is in my district, and so I'm a little more familiar, at least with the people involved, than most. Whether that makes them guilty or innocent, it doesn't, but I would just suggest that I think there's a lot of facts out there we do not know and that we probably shouldn't be discussing them. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other members who wish to speak on this matter? Is there any motion? Anybody like to entertain at this point?
Just one, just one more. I think we need to remove false information from real facts, and that it is our responsibility as a legislative body who represents, who represents the people. I think we have a responsibility to find out what is going on. I believe that, well, there's a police officer who was disciplined, I believe, or is in the process of indiscipline for something very similar, and obviously, we need to know what is going on and whether we are being, we are being fair in disciplining people or are we being juicy on who we discipline and who we do not discipline. So I think it is our responsibility to find out the facts. And the information that I may have may be incorrect, and I would like to know the facts. And the only way that we're going to know all the facts is by going into a second session so that we don't hurt anybody's reputation and get, ask the right questions and get the answers and find out whether, whether we are doing things properly or not.
So, I mean, I guess, are you looking to filibuster until the attorney comes down? Or are we?
I have, I just received a message that he can, that he can come. I asked him how, how long, so I'm waiting for a response to see how long he will give.
Is there either a motion to table or to go into recess?
I would make the motion to table. I would make the motion to table so that we can move on to something else, and when the attorney shows up, then we can go back again. So I make the motion to table.
Motion to table, 42616, it's been made, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As have it. Is there any other matters before this committee, anybody wish to take off the table?
37116.
Do we have new business?
Is a motion to take 37116, review an investigation, damage to Veterans Memorial Stadium. Off the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have it. Counsel Ortiz.
So, with the spring being here and actually as right across from us at the Common, our spring, I guess, festival is happening, and I know that we wanted to review this document and review the usage of our open spaces and what they're going to be used for. I know that there was a cross-reference to the South Common and the North Common as far as charter-wise, what we can use our space for, and if we were going to address Veterans Memorial Stadium, we should be addressing everything. That's, that's what I remember from that conversation, and so that, I was reminded of that as I drove in this evening and saw that across. I guess my concern lies with if, do we make one set of rules for how the Veterans Memorial Stadium is used versus how our green spaces are used?
Yes, we do.
Want to elaborate on that?
Are you done, Counsel Ortiz? Any others which speak on this matter? Counsel Maldonado?
Yes. I believe that Abel Bargas came in front of this committee and presented some changes to contractual agreements so that what happened at the stadium will not happen again. And he also, if I recall correctly, he also presented some, some action plan so that we can correct any future, any future similar situation.
It should be in the packet, that's what I'm looking for right now.
Mr. Chairman, just to interject, the, the attorney said that he would, he could be here in an hour. I think that would be, that would be crazy. So, let me tell him not to, and we can probably reschedule another, another meeting to discuss this, so.
So before us right now is 37116. Who has the floor? Mr. Rodriguez? No?
I say, yes, we have special rules for the stadium.
And what should, and how should that be different, though?
It is different.
Well, how?
That's how the city have it. We can change the stadium, but it doesn't affect the other-
According to the charter, though, there's, the wording is not clear. And so, it says that we shouldn't even be having that fair that we should have, that we're having right now. And this has been an ongoing kind of discussion, or we've just been punting it down, and I think that we should look at it and-
It's in the ordinance committee right now.
One more minute of time, please.
Through your counsel advice.
Are you done, Counsel Ortiz?
I think-
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes, I said that it's in the ordinance committee currently. That ordinance is in the ordinance committee, and it's been reviewed at that level currently.
Counsel Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. LaPlante. I'm of the opinion, I feel it's fairly informed, that what does make the Common different is that it was deeded to the City of Lawrence by a private entity and that it has, it has a indefinite legal, again, legal term, but it was deeded to the city, and it was with certain restrictions, and it was supposed to be passive recreation, passive use. And whether it's the feast in the fall, or Samanaspana in the spring, or the baseball field, it's there 365 days a year. I think they all can be called into question with respect to the deed that provided that land to the city when it was incorporated. I'm sure greater legal minds than mine have pursued it, and we have a baseball field, and we have a feast, and we have fall events, we have Samanaspana. So, it's being used. Whether or not it's consistent with the desires of the Essex Company when it gave it to the City of Lawrence, I personally don't believe it is, but it seems to be, seems to be what the City of Lawrence has done for decades, at least 50 years that I can recall. So, I would agree with my colleague that there is special rules for the Common, and I believe it's embedded in the deed that gave it to the City of Lawrence and how it was to be used and-
used and perpetuity. And open space, as we all know, is open space, and it, in and of itself, is recreational, passive. And really, it's up to this legislative body as to how we choose to accept those land, like when we just accepted the Ferris site. You know, there's cer-, I believe that, that had a, that, that has certain uses that it can be used for because it's structured. But I do believe each one of these are different, but in particular, the Campion Common, named for the, the veterans that died in World War II, is, is different, is unique, in the sense that it actually has a, a legal deed that stipulates what the city can and cannot do with it, whether or not we're consistent, whether or not we're, we're in compliance. I don't believe so, but that's my two cents with respect to that.
Let me interject. We have two departments here, head here this evening. Is there a need for them to be here on any other matter this evening, or can they be released?
Are we looking at new business?
We're looking at whatever anybody wants to take off the table.
Yes.
There's new business, that's not table.
11917.
Harvey?
New business, 11917.
Okay.
We're presently on 37116, so would you like to table this matter?
We're done with the discussion on 37116. If we are, I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'll, I'll table the matter for the moment.
Motion to table has been made, and seconded on the Veterans Memorial Stadium. Is there all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Of course, no, the ayes have it. Back to the top of the agenda, 11917. Review of the report regarding the Paulino matter prepared by the mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Adam.
The, the mayor hired individuals outside of the city to produce a report, to determine whether the city acted appropriately in the matter of Paulino. As all of you know, Paulino was the young man that was found decapitated. And the mayor promised that there was going to be an independent report from the outside. And for some reason, the report has not been, has not been made public, or has not been completed. And people in the community are asking why. And they need some answers. They need some answers. They need answers either by the mayor, or they need answers maybe by the chief of police as to what happened to the report, what are the findings so far. And I want to make sure that, that, that people out there don't form the wrong conclusion, which can be very eas-, that, that, which can be very easily happen. So the, the reason for placing this item in the agenda is to, number one, get some answers either from the chief of police or the mayor as to what is happening with the report. We are paying money, so we are paying somebody to produce a report, and so far, there is no report. And we need answers. The community is asking for answers.
Is there a motion? Is there, is there?
Well, yes. I don't know whether, whether the chief of police would be able to, to give us any, any feedback on, on that report, or whether, what is the delay? Can you, can you?
Will the police chief please come forward and try to respond to Mr. Maldonado's question regarding this report?
I think because of the nature of the ongoing criminal investigation and person, individual being charged as a homicide investigation, I think that the, that has to be seen to its end, I think before that, that report can be completed. That's my understanding.
So the reason, again, let me understand, the reason why the, number one, has the report been finished, or it's not finished?
I don't, I don't know.
You don't know?
Answer that.
Okay. So your opinion is that because of the sensory nature and the investigations that are going on, that the report is not being made public for that reason?
Yes, just from, from correspondence between myself and the, the investigators.
Okay. Okay.
Question.
I don't have any more questions.
Any guests which speak on this matter?
I have, I have a question.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Sure. Chief? So currently, there is a, I believe, a, a group of four individuals doing a, a report for this matter, correct?
From the outside?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Have you or somebody under you interviewed with them?
Yes, sir.
Did you provide them the right, the, the information that they were looking for? On their, the, the condition of that there is a current investigation on that matter?
I have spoken with the, the investigators myself.
Okay. So you have no idea if the report has been concluded?
What's that?
Do you have any idea if the report has been concluded?
I don't believe so.
So I'm assuming, is, is not fair to ask you that question, because I'm assuming that any contract for that report was done between the mayor and the outside?
Yes.
People. But I guess that the question should be asked to the mayor, if the report has been concluded, not to the chief of police. Because, I mean, I'm assuming that you were part of the report, but not necessarily the entire report was based on the chief or the police department. So on the dark condition, is this body want to ask the mayor in a correspondent?
I think that would be good idea.
To see whether or not the report has been concluded?
Yeah, I think it's the mayor. Because the mayor called, called, Mr. Davania? Yes. It's true, the chief of police don't make any decision about the commission. He's the, he's the mayor. The person who put, answered is the mayor. I think he don't have it.
Has anybody from the-
I would like to make a motion then.
Anybody from the committee call the mayor and ask him that question?
Can I?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Sure, I would like to ask the mayor officially now, whether or not that, that report has been concluded. And if, if it has been concluded, to allow us to read it, it can be made public. Or legally, I think that if we get to us, it have to be public. But we can definitely also ask the attorney whether we can read the report without making it public in case it's finished. Or we can ask the mayor. The first question have to be whether or not the report has been done. And I, I'm assuming that Counsel Maldonado was about to make the motion to ask the mayor, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I could do that.
So there's a motion on the floor to, to ask the mayor in a formal manner whether or not the report regarding the Paulino matter has been completed. Is that accurate?
Second the motion.
That, that's your motion.
No, I mean, that's, that's what you were about to say, right?
Well, you were suggesting-
Yes, I make that motion.
That's the motion made by Counsel Rodriguez, and I believe-
My second motion.
Seconded by Counsel Maldonado.
I have another motion.
Is there any further?
I have another motion, yeah. Because that answer couldn't be yes or no. And, and I would like to, that, the, the answer to that motion could be yes, or could be no. Now, my second motion will be-
Well, why don't you include in your motion, the whole thing, as to whether the, if it is ready, whether it's going to be-
We already, already voted on it, right?
We haven't voted on anything yet.
Okay.
So my, my recommendation to Mr. Rodriguez is to amend his motion to include what he's about to include right now.
Yes. So I would like to amend my motion and say that if the report has been concluded, to have the legal advice on whether we can have that report without, without being public, or if we couldn't, we couldn't, and then make it public. I mean, it's a little, it's a little kind of complicated a motion, but the motion would be ask the mayor whether or not the, the report has been concluded, and if, if that's a yes, to provide it to this body.
So the motion is to ask the mayor the report's been made, if it's a yes, to release the report to the council. I think it's as simple as that. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Motion's been made, and this has been seconded, it has been. There's no, any further discussion on the matter? Here and now, I'll call the question, all in favor. Oh, by the way, did you want him to release it by email to us? Send to all the councils by email?
Which have a way.
However the mayor wants to provide it, it's up to him. Motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it.
I make the motion to table the document.
Motion to table document.
Second.
11917 has been made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next document is new, under new business is 1617, administrative action against Lawrence police officer. Mr. Maldonado?
Yes. This, this will also require some legal advice on the part of the attorney.
May, may I ask him a question?
Mr. Maldonado has the floor?
Yes, I, I think this will require some legal advice on the part of the attorney. I don't know whether they are pending litigation on this particular action against a police officer. So I'd rather, I'd rather that we don't discuss it, and simply, I would speak to the city attorney to see what would be the best way of, of going into a secret session at another meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Rodriguez?
I would like to ask for clarification on this item, whether or not we are discussing a specific police officer, or we are talking about the concept of legal or, or administrative action in general.
This is, this is spec-
Finish his question. You done?
Yes. If that's the case, we can discuss, discuss the concept of how we, how the police department proceed with that, or if, if that's regarding a specific individual, and then we have, we have to have one of the reason, of the 10 reasons to go to executive session.
In this particular case, uh-
Maldonado?
In this particular case, it's a specific individual, so I'd rather that-
No problem.
Is there a motion?
I would, I make the motion to table the document.
Motion to table has been made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
After the last on the new business is 1717, City of Lawrence litigation expenditures review from 2013 to present. Mr. Maldonado?
Yes. I requested from the mayor and the city attorney to provide us with a list, and a, a list of, of cases that have been or have been litigated since 2013, and how much money we have expended, so that we can have a good understanding of where we stand with, with litigation expenditures. It is my understanding that we have spent more than $3 million on litigation, and that it is my opinion that we should understand where that money has been spent, the reasons why we have spent that money on litigation, and why we have used outside attorneys to represent the city in specific cases, et cetera, et cetera. I was hoping that both the city attorney and the mayor will provide this council with that information, but we haven't received it yet. So what I would like to do is make a motion that we request from the city attorney and the mayor, the list of requested information, so that we may be able to discuss it more, with more, with more knowledge of what is there.
Second discussion.
So I'm making that form of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion, as I understand it, a motion to send of-
To send correspondence to the city attorney and the mayor, requesting that the information previously requested be submitted to this council.
Motion's been made, and-
Second with the question.
And I will also remind the, Mr. Maldonado, I believe we all have received from the city attorney, the city attorney's report for this past year.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, I think that's part of the answer, one of those years. All right.
Second with discussion.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes. I would like to clarify a couple of things in terms of the motion. Are you looking for the litigation expenditure by the, by the attorney? Or you looking for litigation expenditure from the mayor? Except, because I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we have to understand that the city attorney report to the city council.
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily to the mayor. Two different, two different departments, two different situations. So are you looking for two different reports, or are you looking for the city attorney only?
Well, I-
Mr. Rodriguez has got a question for Mr. Maldonado. Do you have an answer to this question?
Yes. I believe that, that both jointly can produce one report.
They, they work different. They have different departments. They are under us, the city attorney.
Well, the, the reason, the reason why I say that jointly they can produce is because at times, attorneys have been hired by the mayor without the approval of the city attorney. So the city attorney may not have knowledge of that. So, so what I'm looking for is a complete list, what I'm looking for is a complete list, so we can have a better understanding, a complete list of cases that are, that have been or are being litigated against the city or by the city against somebody else, whether the, the attorneys have been hired from the, from the outside, or whether those cases have been litigated inside, in-house.
So, Mr. Rodriguez?
Sure. Thank you. So you're saying that the administration have hired outside advice, legal advice, but that's not necessarily through the, through the city attorney department, correct?
It is, it is my understanding that that's the, it is my understanding that that's the case, yes.
That's the case. So it's under the administration budget?
No, it's not under the administration budget. It's under, any, any legal counsel that is hired from the outside have to be approved by the city attorney. And normally, any expenses of outside legal attorney is paid through the attorney's office, our attorney's office. But there has been cases where attorneys have been hired, and, and again, part of the responsibility of the city attorney is to, is to approve the hiring of legal, outside legal counsel. And it is my understanding that legal counsel has been hired, outside legal counsel has been hired without consultation with the city attorney. So, so that's why I'm looking for a complete list of all litigation cases that the city have had in the past three or four years, whether the, those are cases that are being litigated by outside attorney, or whether they are being litigated by, in, by in-house attorney.
Okay. You're looking for one then. So, but through your counsel, present. You're looking for two things. Two things that are, one is a, a serious accusation. And if that's the case, we're gonna have to discuss this at this body, probably through this, through this item or through other item. But you're saying that, according to the city shadow, that the city attorney is the one that authorize any outside legal advice that we get, correct?
That is correct.
But you're saying that the mayor is, is, is doing some hiring that the city attorney, without the city attorney knows- without the city attorney knows, knowing about it. So that's a completely different topic, that is hard, if that's the case, but we're going to have to talk about it, because as far as I understand, the city attorney report to this body directly.
That is correct.
Not to the mayor?
Well, that is not correct.
Well, according to the city charter, that is the point, that's, that's, that's what is correct. So, and if that's not the case, and then we have to align that up. That doesn't have to do much to what your motion is, and some, some, some aspect in mind, but I'm going to support your motion, but I, I think that we should go a little deeper into that discussion, because if, if what you're, what you're saying is the truth, even though I don't like what you're saying, it's my understanding of it, because it does base on comment, probably, but if that's the case, I would like to go through the, that report, and to go, and to talk to the city attorney, to see whether or not he is not, he, his department is violating the law, our common law, that he is supposed to report to us, not to the mayor, and if that's the, if, in, if the mayor is taking those duties. So that's a, that's a serious allegation, and if that's the case, I would like to talk about that, by all means, under, under this item, probably.
So the, the question before the committee, as the chair understands it, is a request to the city attorney to provide for this body a listing or a roster of the litigation expenditures from 2013 to present, to include things that are done in council, in-house, outside council, litigation that's been, that's been where the city is the plaintiff, and where it's the defendant on both sides of the V.
That is well put.
And so you're looking for the entire, essentially roster of cases-
Yes.
For four years. I believe that's the motion before this body.
Yes.
And I think you also, did you ask for money as well as part of that, judgments?
Yes, of, yes, of course.
As I understand it, so that's, I believe that's the motion, and I believe that motion has been seconded, am I right?
No, honor.
Yes, they have seconded the motion for discussion.
And so now, we've, are we still in discussion, or have we exhausted that discussion? If we've exhausted that discussion, I'll call the question.
I would like to-
Mister Rodriguez?
Sure. I would like to ask, maybe including that motion, asking the, the city attorney to include on that report which outside counsel he was not aware of? And which one was not done the proper way, if, if it's any.
Yeah. I would accept the, I would accept the amendment.
So the, the amendment is to, is, the amendment, I, I'm sorry, Chuck, I guess, when we use the word improper, I, 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 that's, that's a very difficult word to, because we don't know precisely what proper is, because no one has, so far as yet, put up the language in the charter or the ordinances that reflects what's proper or improper. In fact, there might actually be some gray area with respect to that, and so the motion is, you can offer whatever you want, but that's just a procedural concern, not a procedure, but a concern that I have with it. But anyway, as I understand your motion, you want to know what, what the, what the city attorney was aware of or not aware of with respect to litigation that the, that the city has introduced. Is that true?
That administration-
And then you can, and then you can make, you can, I would imagine you can make the decision whether it's proper or improper, rather than the city attorney.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I, I would think that you would want to take that word out of it. So for all clarity, Pat, we probably lost you on this. So, so besides the two first elements, the third and final element, as I understand it, is for the city attorney to essentially asterisk or make note of those illegal, of those, any lawsuits that outside council is involved with, that he had no knowledge of or did not approve. Is that right?
Well, yeah.
Okay. That makes sense. So, I don't think there's any further discussion on this, is there? I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. There is no other business that's on new business. If there's nothing else to take out of table matters, I will ask if this body would like to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it.